All right.
Yeah, it is.
It is. But on that audacity, the reporting source is all. All right, you're good.
Were you ready? All right. We'll now call the city council special meeting workshop to order from May 28 to 5:30 PM. Please rise to the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this night. Lord, Lord, your word says that we are two and more gathered together, Father. There will be here, and he will be present, Father. Lord, we just thank you to be on the team tonight, but we ask that you will be down here tonight, Father. Bless everyone here, Father. Thank you. Amen.
I. The United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
May we be seated?
Madam clerk slash city manager, will you please call Rome?
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember McCure.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor. Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. The one and only item number four is to be a discussion, city manager hiring process. Chrissy, I believe this is your show, so go ahead.
Thank you. So, um, as I included in my documentation for the packet on May 21, staff got together and did a brainstorming session on how we want to proceed with the hiring processes as we move forward. The documentation that you have before you just has some ideas to kind of get you guys focused and thinking on how we are to proceed. We provided not only a draft city manager job description, but a survey table or excuse me salary table that gives you a comparison of salaries as well as survey results from Florida Ligo City. So I think that information is going to be really useful for you as we go through this process. We also discussed the potential of having a hiring committee. Again, this is just a suggestion. We're just trying to give you guys different ways to think about how we move through this process. There are a list of recommendations. The names included were provided to us by members of the community as well as staff. And also, I believe, human resources director Koger has some items she'd like to discuss with you as well. And the whole point of this meeting is really not to make a decision so much as to give you guys enough material so that on June 3rd, we can actually move forward with a decision.
Okay. All right, Ms. Kurgari said that you had some information for us as well.
Yes, in addition to looking at the possibility of how to proceed with the city manager role, sorry, we need to also consider the interim role and the pay scale for the interim. The process itself to bring in the next city manager, just from talking to different people could take four or five months. So we need to take a look at what is a fair pay scale for the interim as well as who that interim long term might look like. We, when we were meeting to have this brainstorming session, Chrissy shared that she definitely would be happy to continue if you need her to, as well as Jason also shared that he would also be willing to be the interim. So just wanted to share that information.
Okay. All right, we'll try to take this one at a time. Keep in mind, we're not necessarily here to take a vote. It's more about fact finding and discussion. First off with the job description. I assume everyone's had a chance to read the job description. Do we have any questions for staff or have any discussion back and forth on things to change or things you like, don't like?
Here, is this the salary that humans and mutuals have set forth?
Now, we're talking about the job description. So the top has a salary bar, 120 to 140, but we're not necessarily talking about just the salary, but the document in its entirety. The duties, there's anything that changed with the duties or anything like that?
Was this put together from a different, from different cities? Job descriptions from city managers of different cities? Or was this something that we just, not we, I'm just saying that was put together depending on who?
It was a joint effort from the staff that's here as well as a compilation of what the city manager job description was that we had in the file.
We had, we had a job description for that one?
There's, there was drafts that were in there. Nothing was finalized, so looking at all the drafts.
A lot of them too were from earlier years, 2019. So right before city manager Schrader had joined the team.
Okay. So obviously you want to pay close attention to qualifications. This is the bar that we're going to want to try to hold the next city manager to. Knowledge of section is important. This is going to be the priorities of what you want them to know. We also have the items, you know, one through eight there. Kind of spells out what the intention of this position is to do. Anything?
Along with qualifications, is there also, can there also be a list of things that would disqualify individuals?
I mean, I think the council has full leeway to do whatever they wish, as long as it meets the human resources requirements and doesn't piss Jerry off.
I will say that, sorry, I will say that Jerry did look at this too, the job description.
Good. The usual.
You'll want to turn the microphone on, just hit the button.
Maria Sutherland, 900 West Main. I was just going to say that if you have anything that does disqualify anyone, a background check should cover that. And I would suggest instead of going seven years, that you go possibly 20, because there are many people out there that have criminal records that get hired because they don't go beyond the seven years. Child abusers, you name it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you have something else to add there?
Um, just other things that may be a disqualifier, not necessarily a criminal act, but maybe even something in their position, say if they worked for a big corporation and there was, you know, any allegations of misdoing or whatever for a corporation, or if they were fired for any reason, it seems like that should be disqualifying.
Misconduct.
Yeah, like misconduct, whether it's like sexual misconduct or, you know, financial misconduct. I think the background check is a good idea as well, just because they are basically the face of the city.
Sure. Perhaps Denise might have some input on that.
Yes, we, we would do a full background check. I do like the idea of going longer. We typically do seven year, but we can request a longer criminal record check. We also do reference checks, personal as well as professional. And anything documented would be presented to council for final approval.
Okay. Please, that'd be another one of those too. Depending on right, on background check.
It's a, it's a full background check, criminal and national, we could go. Local and national.
From there, I would like to make a suggestion, although some may not agree with it. I was looking at it that it was talking about that the same council should live in.
Howlins County.
Ms. Taylor, could you, could you, I can't hardly hear you, that's okay.
Looking at. I was looking at it where the city manager can live in Howlins County. I don't know, just my opinion. I think that if we had a city manager that lives in the city, city limits, I think that they would be more serious about the city than living in Lake Placid. If you live in the city limits, you see what this council see. But when you go home in the evening on weekend, you don't necessarily see what we see. It was just a suggestion that I thought maybe we get to change it at this point, that the city managers should perhaps live in the city limits. That was just a suggestion.
So are you talking about in the city limits in town or like the actual, like Avon Park Lakes or the estates or somewhere like that?
Well, when you live out in Avon Park Lakes compared to inside the city limits, there's a difference, is it not?
Well, it is.
Yeah, so we, I'm glad you asked that. I was, I was talking about the city limits.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. You know, compared to.
I, I agree with you. I think that's something that we should at least consider when we get the resumes from the people. I, I'm not, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, but I believe when you moved here and took the position, you not only moved to Avon Park, but you actually bought a house here. So he's committed to Avon Park, and I think that we should consider that in the next city manager, that they should be committed, you know, not to see limits, at least within the city itself, at the very least. You're going out 25 miles, then if there's a main problem, somebody's going to take a 30 minutes or more to get here. I, I think what you're asking for salary, I think that that's a, shouldn't it be something we should at least consider when hiring somebody that they're willing to move here?
Yeah, I was looking, sorry, mayor, I was looking at a, from a point of, oh, you want to be our city manager, but you don't want to live in our city because it don't look good enough for you. Sun and Lakes and Sebring Highlands Hammock area, they look better to you. You rather live out there, but you want to represent Avon Park.
Yeah, I mean, I think long term, that's, that's not an issue. And in fact, someone that lives inside the city limits obviously would notice things more than someone who doesn't, right? It's just a matter of how big of a net do you want to cast? So if you want to do that, quite frankly, I'm for it, but I think that we definitely need to give a period of time that if someone is, you know, if they're living in Bartow or something, and then they would give them a year or even a year and a half or even two years to move here. And you can even use that as a kind of a, a warm up period or a trial period type thing to see how committed they are and see if it's going to work out. I just think that there's a lot of professional people out there that may not be willing to ditch their entire life to take a chance on a small town. Whereas if you give them a period of time to move there, I think you'd be a lot more likely to get somebody that's more professional and has better qualifications.
Not to mention the housing crisis and stuff that's going on now, the lack of availability of houses. I don't feel like it should be listed as a disqualifying thing, maybe even just award extra points towards someone who actually does live in the city, but I don't think we should completely rule it out just because somebody lives on the outskirts of, say, Avon Park and Frostproof or, you know, Sun and Lake and Avon Park.
Mayor, may I say something?
Sure.
Um, just after meeting with everyone, one of the biggest concerns that we have is that we're going to pigeonhole ourselves and limit the amount of candidates we can get. This is a very important job. So my concern, and I'm just speaking for myself, is if we did that, it might limit the candidates that we have that we can bring in. And I know you mentioned that with the net, but that is a serious concern.
Okay.
Can I add one thing?
Sure.
Um, I was just being advised that the charter does say that they can live anywhere, so I think we need to check that as well.
Is that? Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, anything else to add on that particular point?
No, I do like your idea about a, maybe a year limit to see if they would, would be willing to move, but.
Maria, could you come up to the microphone real quick? It's Maria Sutherland.
You had a city manager that lived in Lake Placid and the charter changed when he was here. I think it was 2015 or 16 where it, there's no compelled reason for anyone to have to live inside the city. But Ms. McGuire made a good point. You could probably do a point system, but maybe you need to check with a lawyer on that because right now you cannot defy your own charter.
Yep. Okay, thank you very much. All right. Anything else on the qualifiers or?
Um, just one, one more question. Denise said that we do the background check and we do reference checks and things like that. The references, are they provided by the applicant? Or do you automatically contact their previous employers, like teachers? And we have to contact the last like three or four schools that they've worked at. So can that also be implemented not to where they, you're always going to give yourself a good reference, in other words, but can we put it to where we actually have to contact the cities where they've worked or the corporations that they've worked?
We, we definitely do contact the prior, I think it's 10 years of employment to get the full background. We can extend that to 20 even. There's no problem in doing that. And then they provide us personal references in addition to the professional.
Well, I think if, in 20 years, if there's a regularly occurring behavior, I think it's going to show in 20 years.
So move it to 20 rather than 10? She goes back 10.
I'd say do it all at 20. I think that would be the most extensive background check that we've ever had for a city manager. And I think we should, why not? Okay, I mean, as long as, you know, Denise doesn't think this is some sort of an extraordinary thing that's going to take a huge amount of time. So.
20 years would be good, I think.
Okay. Anything else on the background or qualifications?
No, but I'd like to go back over the salary range if you don't mind.
Sure.
It was less than a year ago, our city manager, I believe, was making $90,000 a year. So I, I think that obviously prices and qualifications and money has gone up quite a bit. But I also believe that the last time we had a really great committee who had, I think they had five members that they put in their top five choices to pick, which was also changed by city council members also put in a vote and moved some people up. But I also believe at the same time, there was somebody in there that actually was asking for more money than in the range. So I, I think that instead of putting our range, which is pretty much, you know, $30,000 more than what we were paying a year ago, why not start off at 100 and go to 130,000? And that doesn't mean if somebody thinks that they deserve 140,000, they will put in their resume if they want their job. And then we could decide whether, what their qualifications and their expertise. And maybe, you know, we could always, this isn't a lockdown price of the range. This is just kind of the range we're putting out there for somebody to put in for it. But I think if somebody really wanted the job or really wanted to come here, they would either take that range or they would say, I, I would come, but I need 140, and then we could decide whether that is, is worth, you know, extending the range at that time. But.
Sure, I mean, whenever they actually get hired, there would have to be some form, some form of a employment contract anyway. So that would actually stipulate the fine details of what that number would be. But to be clear, what you're simply suggesting is taking the salary range instead of 120 to 140, just from 100 to 140, is that right?
Oh, to 130.
To 130?
Yeah.
Okay.
You might, you might get somebody that's got 25 years experience and lives in West Palm Beach and decided that he wants to retire his last 10 years. He got all kinds of experience and knowledge and education and is willing to come up here for $110,000 to spend his last 10 years. And he may be more qualified than somebody that's, you know, got five years somewhere else that maybe have a master's degree, but maybe, you know, everybody, you have to look at everybody's resume and question them and see, you know, like they go. It's some of the salaries that were provided here at the size of the cities. I mean, that's all good things to look at, but you don't really know exactly how long those persons have been in that position in that city. You don't know exactly what their qualifications are. Maybe they turn around and got a master's or doctor's degree in the meantime, or got several different schools and accreditation so they could constantly been somewhere for 20 years. And so they, that's why they're making high salaries compared to other cities. But like compared to Sebring and a couple of others, I think that it's, we can, why not start off low and see what happens? But yeah, last time we had, I think we had almost 20 people that applied, if I'm not mistaken. And we had a lot of people that applied and they hadn't, they narrowed it down to five people. So, and I, just a suggestion.
So let me just ask you one question.
Sure.
If you have a person that is a rock star applicant and they come here and the spread still said from 100 to 140, and they stood at that podium and gave you a 20 minute speech as to why they deserve 140, would you still stick to your 130?
No, no, I think that's, that's something that we have to, like you said, a point scale, you know, does a guy have more qualifications, like you said, a rock star that's got multiple degrees? It's got 20 years experience instead of five years experience?
Sure. You hear what I'm saying? Instead of, instead of living in at 130, I mean, keeping it at 140, as long as you're prepared personally to make that judgment call of where you think it needs to be, then, I mean, it could be a million. It doesn't really matter as well. It's kind of what I'm getting at, is that if you're, if you're morally prepared to make that decision, no matter who's standing in your face, then.
Yeah.
It doesn't really matter.
Absolutely.
This just more or less casts a bigger net, I guess, is.
Well, I, I see your point, you know.
That's my only issue with that is I would want, whatever that criteria is, I would want it spelled out though. That way you don't have somebody that you may think that you really like and they have a bachelor's degree, so you're offering them 150 just because you like them, but then somebody comes in with a doctorate degree and you're still sticking to your 110. There needs to be some kind of criteria, you know, either bachelor's degree, start off at this amount, master's degree, this amount, doctorate degree, this amount, zero to five years experience, five to 10, 10 to 15.
Sure.
I wouldn't have any problem with that.
So, I mean.
I agree with that as well.
That's something that's kind of been hinted at a few times already tonight, and it's basically a point system. The only issue with that is that that point system has to be defined and that has to be gone over, which takes a little bit of time. So Denise, if we wanted to issue a point system and have a fine detail in regards to qualifications versus pay scale, do you think that's something you could come up with relatively quickly?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. What input do you think that you would really need or want from council in order to do that?
What, what your expectations are? What, what do you want to find on the point scale? Is it tenure? Is it schooling? Is it? What, what are you wanting to score?
Okay, so obviously with qualifications of education, that's pretty simple. I mean, a doctorate is going to be your highest and then no college would be your lowest, right? If you're going to do it from one to five or one to 10, however you choose.
I wouldn't go below a bachelor's degree though, I wouldn't even.
No.
They don't have a bachelor's, that's just.
Using as an example.
Yeah, I agree.
And then tenure, I mean, I think tenure is very important. I think tenure versus your bad remarks, how many times you've been written up or complained about or what have you. Those definitely need to take a fairly serious toll on that score for sure.
Then maybe even experience in the particular areas. So accounting experience, you know, sanitation experience, those types of things in the major departments. Okay.
Right. And even that would have to necessarily, that would have to be pretty well broken down because you have very important facets of the city. You could be the world's greatest sanitation, but you've never had a single person under you. You don't want that.
Right.
Versus you might have worked for a corporation where you had 12,000 people under you, but you don't know anything about cities, you know? So that would have to be broken down into probably, you know, two or three or four groups.
Okay.
Types of experience.
Sure.
Yeah, one of my keys would be definitely city working experience.
Sure. So in thinking of the point skills, or anything else that anyone can think of to further break that down or to add columns or what?
Well, mayor, there's something that doesn't appear on a resume. You know, everybody know how they work. You make up your resume, you can put anything on there you want to. I'm more concerned about.
Background checks for?
Well, no, I'm more background checks is for that. And I, I don't know if you know this, mayor, but you can do a background check and, and she can call a business and they can say whatever they want for, to you, to you, because that's their friend. Okay? So my, my concern is not what they put on the, on their resume. My concern is what type of personality do they have?
And how you determine?
Do they, yeah, how do you determine that? That's important. We got, how many, how many staff members we got, 98, 92?
98.
Um, how are they with keeping the morale up of the staff? What are their soft skills? You know, it's hard to, it's hard to determine those kind of things. But like I said, you can put whatever you want on a resume and all of it can look good. But if you can't come in here and manage people, then your resume can say whatever it want to say. We, you, you, you dealing with staff as well.
True, but you know, if you go back 20 years, if every person that they work with is their friend for the last 20 years, then it's probably safe to say they're a pretty good person and maybe they'll be friends with you too. So I think if you could spell out maybe what the background check exactly entails, it's not just criminal.
Yeah, they, they check everything. They, they check registered sex offender, they check anything you would think of motor vehicle records, criminal activity.
Would it also include write ups at work, whether if they were hostile work environment, something we dealt with recently?
We, we do ask for disciplinary information and sometimes they will give it, sometimes they won't.
If it's with a public entity, then.
Yeah, if it's public record, we do request it.
Okay. So the type of person that we would be looking for with public experience would more than likely have more exposure to that anyway. So if they can pass that test, that would actually mean even more, wouldn't you say?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And Denise, tell me if I'm wrong, I haven't been in the open market for a job in years, but my understanding is that most times if you call somebody's ex employer, they're very limited to what they can say. Some will only say, yes, they worked here, but they won't tell you whether they were good or bad or anything else. Is that true or not true in general?
In a private entity, yes.
Okay.
In a public, no.
Okay.
So can we include that on the application and have the person basically verify whether or not there has been any prior issues at their employers?
Yeah, we do ask that. We ask that question direct. Is there anything that we need to know about? We ask the candidate that.
You just can't force an answer.
Correct.
Do you also ask them if they're eligible for rehire?
Yes, we do, as part of the background.
Okay. And then do we ask the employers to, just to describe their character?
Yes, some, some will, some won't. You'll, you run into situations where depending on how, going back 20 years, it might not even be the same staff there. So maybe they didn't even know the person, but they can give us what's in the file is pretty much all they can give us.
So you, you can ask them like the terms of their separation and things like that?
Well, another point that we do have access to would be litigation. If we know the counties in which they worked, you can do clerk of courts checks.
Yes.
I think that would be important. You know, if someone has a lawsuit in every county they work in, that's probably not a good idea for us to hire them.
Right.
And all that being said, kind of on Bernice's take about being able to kind of see somebody's character and stuff like that, rather than a committee, why can't we speak to all of the, the individuals? If they're not disqualified because they don't meet the education requirements and things like that, rather than having a committee talk to them and kind of weed them out, why not have them come before us and let us do that?
So historically, all of the, whether it be finalists or everyone would always come to the council meeting and they would always be required to be asked a certain set of questions. A lot of times the council would agree on the questions before the meeting. Sometimes they wouldn't, you know, it seemed done a few different ways. But nevertheless, the, the applicant always has to show up to a meeting and always has to stand there in the public and hear the questions of the council.
So then what would the purpose of the committee be then?
Well, the committee is kind of its own thing, and I was going to ask if you had spoken to Jerry about the committee and the legality of it and the effectiveness of it.
I did. So a lot of times municipalities go with these committees, they are operated in the sunshine. So much like a city council meeting, it's a public meeting, the public is invited to participate. They cannot make anything but recommendations to the council, so they do not have any kind of authority. They're just simply fact finding in that capacity. There are some municipalities that it's been very beneficial for them to do that. I haven't seen a lot of cases in my research that show that where it's not. Of course, that's subjective, so it all just depends on the municipality and its structure.
Yeah. Well, the, the main question I had, which would be for Jerry is you have listed on here employees. So you're picking your boss and the boss that you wanted didn't get hired and you didn't really think much of the person that did get hired. Now all of a sudden that person is hired and they are your boss and they know what you said. It's probably not a great thing.
Okay, I, I would not, never vote for an employee to be on the committee. That doesn't make any sense. You're absolutely right, mayor. You don't want an employee, no matter what position they're in, to be able to pick their own boss or mayor of the recommendation. I believe if they wanted to, and I believe in the committee, because I've seen the committees and there's some really great qualified people on here that, that, that they do. that, that, that they do a good job of whitting out some people that aren't even close to even making it, and that, that's very helpful. But, uh, I, I would not mind if, uh, a certain department head wanted to meet with, say, uh, the top three or top five or, or, or give us questions to ask them that would make us feel more comfortable picking them. But, uh, I think the last thing that I would ever vote for, our last thing we would ever really want is an employee to pick his boss because it could go one way or the other way, sour on both parties, and I just don't think that's a good idea, and I would not go for that at all.
Well, I mean, I just think it may be a better way to go would be to set the qualifications at the bar that you want, not necessarily a wide net there, but something that you could live with as your minimum, and then obviously the human resources director is going to field all of the applicants that come in. If they don't meet those requirements, they're not going to come in. And then at that point, they're, they're in the public anyway. So all those people, all these people, um, that are on the list are going to have an opportunity to ask some questions at public meetings. It's usually never done at one meeting. I don't suggest that we do it at one meeting. It should be done over the course of two or three meetings. So that everybody has ample chance to ask their questions, think of reoccurring questions, come back again, ask those final questions before we actually commit to hiring someone.
Yeah, I would like the department heads to give us the questions or turn them into the human resources and allow us to ask these questions.
Well, that's something that would be very helpful is every department has specialties and they know what needs to, they know what information that manager needs to know and understand.
Right.
I, I agree with that.
So wouldn't that be part of the qualifications in the job description? Well, it may just, if, yeah, it would be part of that, but then it would also be in how would you handle this situation? They could put out scenarios. A hurricane's coming, how would you handle the emergency preparation?
Yeah.
Those kinds of things.
Um, I, I just, I have an idea. I didn't mean to cut you off, but you're done. I, I don't, I don't agree with the employees. I don't. I don't think there should be eight people on the committee. I think that's too many, too much opinions there to take forever to get through all those applications. Um, I feel like five would suffice if we were going to do a committee.
I agree.
And I feel like maybe it should be us that pick the committee. One person by each council member would pick a person.
That's a good one.
Um, what is the benefit of a five-person committee other than the five-person committee that's been elected?
Benefit of eight? I don't think we should have any committee is my thing.
Yeah, I mean, so all these council members that are sitting here now have been elected by the city as a whole. What more of a qualification to be on a committee would you want, you know?
I feel like we've had experience working in the city over the last couple of years. I mean, you, you guys obviously have very strong opinions about what you didn't like and you did like and how the new manager would handle situations and stuff like that. I feel like it's, and a lot of times you can tell a lot about a person with your rapport with them.
Sure.
You know, and how they react to us. I don't like going through another person to get the answers. I like to see how it feels in person.
So then you're saying you don't want a committee at all?
I would rather not have a committee. I would rather set qualifications, kind of like Garrett was saying. Set qualifications as long as they meet those minimum requirements, then they're in the pool. And then let us start asking questions, let the department heads come and ask questions and go from there.
And we could even have a, a pointed questionnaire that's developed by the department heads and the human resources director, and the attorney needs to look at it as well.
All right, so everybody gets asked the same questions.
What would you do if you had twenty people applied?
We would be here for a little while, but that would be amazing. If we have twenty people that want to come to Avon Park and that meet our qualifications, then that's awesome.
Okay, it would be a first for sure.
Well, I think we had, we had close to that last time. I think we had sixteen or something and they weeded it down to like ten.
I think some of those didn't meet the requirements and they got needed out.
The requirement, so they could do that. And then I think they've got it down to the top five. And I, and I do like the idea too, that I, I would like to, if Jerry says it's okay to be able to talk to, let's say, the top five or top three one-on-one. Because I'd like to be able to have a one-on-one before with that person before I voted on them too, if that's possibility.
So if you remember a couple of times that you and I sat here, once those names are given to the council members, I mean, there's nothing stopping anyone from contacting them. And once it's public knowledge that so-and-so wants to work here and this is their phone number, I mean, anybody, any person in the audience at large can call them.
Good. I'm good with that. Thank you.
Well, Mayor, I had two ideas, and the first one is because at this point we don't know what we're going to go with. So if we did choose a committee, I would say there should be no city employees on that committee.
Yeah.
There should be no board members of any kind on that committee. When I say board members, I'm talking CRA, I'm talking, um, um.
P and Z?
Yeah, I'm talking, it shouldn't be any of those. It shouldn't be no business owners on that, on that committee. And no family members or relatives. So you're going to say, well, God, that narrows out a whole lot of people.
Um, it narrows out a lot of experience.
Well, probably do, but I still believe that there's a lot of experience still in Avon Park. As I look at this list, it seems to me these are the same names that keep coming up since I've been sitting here for two and a half years. And it's not like I haven't been paying attention to Avon Park before the two and a half year. These are the same names, same people that seems to be making these big decisions about Avon Park. And so if you eliminate those same old people and get some new people, you, you know, you got the college, you got APCI, you got the hospital, you, you, you can find somebody if you're really looking for somebody. And so that was my first thing. I told you that if we did get a board member of, um, committee, those are the do, the, the don'ts that I say not to do. But my main thing is, I think, I'm not sure who said it, Shelley. If we're going to do the firing, I think we should be involved in the hiring.
That was, I said that, yes.
Yeah, if we're going to do the firing, we should be involved in the hiring. I'm talking about we should be deep in it. I don't like the fact that I got to go fire somebody that somebody else chose for us. We know what we're looking for. We, 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 we've been sitting here, ushery anyway, you guys have been longer. We know exactly what we're looking for. Now, what I would do is I would still have Denise to sit in to facilitate because she's the human resource and she going to probably tell us the legality or he's going to tell us the, the legality of it, but Denise going to put stop, oh, you can't ask those questions. You know, she's going to tell us what the protocol is, what we can ask a person, what we can't. But that, that thing about their staff is almost comical. It, it is.
That one's on me.
Huh?
That one's on me.
Yeah, it's, it's, to me, it's almost comical that you go and hire your boss. You know, I served in the military, I was a sergeant, and I couldn't make no decision on a general. No more than management should be making the decision on the city manager. That's my take on it.
I, I agree with most everything you said except for the members on the CRA, and the reason why I say that as being the liaison to the CRA for the last several years that, uh, some of the most qualified people are, are on that board and, uh, you know, we finally got to where we got a, a management board to where they got a forum because they got all airports outside Main Street working together. And there's a lot of really smart business people that have been here forever and a day. There's also a lot of great community leaders that have been there, and some of these people may have, have born and, you know, brought up in Avon Park. So I, 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 I actually trust their opinions because I, uh, I, I think that there's some really remarkable people. Actually, I think everybody that Chrissy put on here, I have a lot of respect for all, all the people. But I, but I definitely, I know on the employees, but, uh, and I, and I don't mind what Shelley said. Maybe we all just throw out a name until we get five or whatever, but I, I think the, the, the committee would help us get to a quicker, to a lower number of people for us to do our job and get us quicker chance of getting a, a city manager instead of, uh, going through too many, but I, I, that's just my opinion, but I, I mean, there's people on here that I mean, have been in the city for years and, uh, there's some of the smartest people I've seen sitting up here on the CRA advisory board that, uh, I, I'd like to be able to see them part of that, but that's just my opinion.
Well, they've had the opportunity to sit on boards, but there's also other people in the city who care about the city as well that don't own a business, that don't sit on a board, but would like their opportunity, their voice to be heard as well.
Yep, and I wish them, I wish they would come to meetings more often too. Or, or get on board when their positions are open, but, uh.
I, I would still rather be, I don't want, I don't want there to be any barriers between me and the new applicants. And I feel like when you bring in other people's opinions, and not that I don't, I mean, I think all of those people are awesome and, you know, they do a great job at what they're doing. There's other people in the city that would do a great job as well. But I feel like that's just adding extra noise, in my opinion. I, I feel like if we could go to the, the department heads and we could get those pertinent questions and we could put it together in an application and we could ask, as long as they met those minimum requirements, I feel like if they're going through the trouble of applying, then we should go through the trouble of hearing what they have to say and meeting them.
That's a good point.
Well, uh, as, uh, Bernice said, if we're going to be involved in the firing, we need to be involved in the hiring. Well, I can assure you, there is no greater involvement than being the committee that hires solely, and, uh, you know, it's just, I think it was Terry Heston used to always say, which used to drive me nuts at the time, but I, I understand it is that he would continually go back and say, you know, the people elected us. So there was an opportunity for every voter in Avon Park to cast their vote for the council members that are sitting here, and we were elected by the people and we're sitting here to make these decisions. So obviously anybody on that list or anybody else that you know that you want an opinion from, by all means, you can call them, you can ask them. They should be here asking these questions themselves. So it, it's not silencing anything. If anything, it's, it's actually in greater visibility of the public, I would, I would say.
So what you're saying that, uh, qualified people like these or others could come to our meetings and they could come up and ask questions too, and so we'd get basically the best of both worlds.
Yeah, I mean, I've sat in meetings where there was a hundred plus people here, I mean.
Yep, but I, I can live with that.
If it's an important issue, people show up.
Yep. Yeah, that's, I could live with that.
So I just think we need to take a close look at the, uh, qualifications to make sure that everybody's happy with. You need to view these qualifications as something that if they don't meet this, could you live with it or do it as a need to be set higher? So we've already talked about the, the residency requirement. Uh, there was some back and forth there.
So, um, we can amend the charter, right? When a charter can be amended?
Through a, a very long process.
It has to be on the ballot.
Yep.
Which is coming up in November.
Correct.
Yep, we'd have to ask Jerry if there's enough time to get it through and get it on the ballot.
To get the supervisor of elections as well.
More than likely, if you really work fast, yes.
So then maybe that would be something that we could try to amend on the charter.
Uh, you mean to?
To reduce the mileage radius to maybe ten, fifteen miles.
In the future? In the future, not for the city manager, you're saying?
Yeah, in the future. Hopefully we won't have to visit that again in the future, but.
I assure you, we will. Yes.
Maria Southern, just FYI, a lot of people watch on Zoom, so they may not show up, but some of us pay attention on Zoom. I have a question regarding, uh, qualifications. As you all know, um, there's a very big political nuance attached to hiring somebody that's been everywhere. The same goes for firing people, and I would just hope that when you look at qualifications, that you don't look at someone just being fired based off of a new election or personality conflict between a majority of that commission. Um, there are very qualified people out there that have been terminated from their jobs, and there's not a single city manager that I've ever met that hasn't been fired.
Sure, the city managers by nature don't last more than, was it two years on average?
The only thing I see under qualifications, I like the bachelor's degree and I like the, um, corporate management experience, but maybe we should uh, narrow that down because a corporation can have you and your spouse, and that can be your entire corporation. So maybe we should
Just one.
Put a size, maybe? Since we're talking about entire, running an entire city, let's put, you know, fifty-plus employees or twenty-five-plus employees or something like that.
I think that's a good idea. For sure. Yeah, there's a lot of home-based businesses out there that wouldn't necessarily qualify as managing people. So we have five years of experience. You have to come up here to the microphone.
Candace Anderson. Um, another thing that, I don't know, just, just because on a normal basis, we wouldn't do this when we were hiring our employees, but in order to run an entire city, you might, I don't know if it's possible or not, but you might want to do like a credit check or something like that to see if they've had bankruptcies or anything like that. Is that something?
That is part of the, the background check.
It is, okay.
Yeah.
Good idea.
So we've got five years of executive level municipal or corporate management. So on the corporate management, we would just simply want to add a line about the minimum number of employees that you were over in order for those years to count. So we've heard a suggestion of, what was it, twenty-five or fifty?
I would probably say fifty, just because you're talking about ninety-eight employees here.
We have a suggestion of fifty. Is there any other suggestions?
I'm good with that.
Is that casting the net too small, Chrissy and Denise?
I would say seventy-five at least. Since we at ninety.
I would say that Denise definitely has better expertise when it comes to that.
Denise, what's a good number?
I, I would say fifty or more, and then you could look at when, when we score everything, you can even go with the ones who have greater, but set the bar at fifty.
Yeah, I would be in favor of not counting the years of experience unless it was at least fifty people. So we need to kind of settle on a number. Obviously, we're not here to vote, but need to settle on a number. So we've got fifty and we've got seventy-five.
I'll go with fifty. I'd say fifty.
Okay, fifty it is. All right, experience in growth management, economic development, uh, utilities, all of that is, uh, not necessarily well-defined, but obviously it'll be noted. Anything else in the qualifications that can be more, uh, pinpoint that we want to add?
Now, now, where are we going to keep the ninety days of hire for them to move within the twenty-five mile radius or are we going to change that?
I mean, I would be well, the, the suggestion. The suggestion was that they move inside the city limits. And so if you're going to change it to, I mean, twenty-five miles goes all the way past Frostproof. And we go Frostproof all the way just about to Lake Placid, right?
Or Lake Wells.
Pretty close to it.
Twenty-three.
So if you're now going to say that huge circle down to the city limits, which is quite small, um, you definitely need to raise that ninety days to a much higher number. So first we would need to decide if we're going to stick with the city limits or if it's going to be the greater Avon Park area or a certain mile radius. I think a certain mile radius is the easiest thing to guarantee because you can Google search it. There's no question about it. Is there a straight line more than however many miles? So if we want to reduce that twenty-five miles, by all means, we can change that number. But I think the miles is probably a better way to go.
But do we have to change the charter to change the twenty-five miles?
Um, yes, potentially. So we'll ask Jerry about that to make sure, but that's the way it's looking.
So at this point, that has to stay the same anyway.
Correct.
But I also like your idea, Mayor, about, uh, moving closer within a year or so after, after, you know, being hired. I think that.
I think it's a good idea if we're able to do it.
Okay.
So we'll see what Jerry says.
And I'll make sure to reach out to Jerry before the meeting so we can get answers to these questions.
Perfect. Anything else on the qualifications that we want to add?
Does the city staff have any more qualifications?
Going once, going twice?
I think one of the issues on, um, on the qualifications is that some of the smaller cities, they utilize contractors, so the employee size may not be great unless you have a police department or a fire department. Our case is a very large public works department. So the budget is kind of where it's at, it's where everything's operating. Uh, um, I know fifty sounds, sounds good, but there's many that if they don't have that police department or fire department, then they may not get there because they utilize contractors. We have applicants that come in and they do speak and the sizes that they manage is, is usually small. Especially in, in comparison size cities, so it's just something to think about.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, so I could, just thinking of ways that maybe the budget could also be skewed, um, you know, if there's a port or if there's a, an airport or something like that, you know, things like that can generate ten, twenty, thirty dollars in revenue. So any way that we can maybe narrow that down?
I think, uh, or you can probably use a budget if you manage more than a fifteen million dollar budget or ten million dollar budget, somewhere around there. Um, that you can substitute that, may, it may help you broaden your pool.
Sure.
Maybe on the, only the municipality side though, because you can have a successful corporation and it's still just you.
Sure.
You may have a budget of twenty million and you're only managing you.
Right. Yeah, you can work for a tech company, Radine or something, have a hundred million dollar budget with four people in it, so.
Right.
So definitely municipal, if we're going to, um, put constraints on the the budget, I think municipal would be a good idea to separate the two. What does the rest of the council think?
Yeah, I like that. And, and actually, the, the more I think about it, having a committee, it, uh, it, it does make sense to bypass that because there's so many, in my opinion, so many qualified people out there that could fit the bill of being on that committee that, you know, that, you know, then all of a sudden you got choices of picking your top five, but you're going to pick three. And then it's kind of like, it gets a little bit conflicted that uh, why didn't you pick me and so on and so forth? Because uh, I mean, there's, there's probably at least twenty-five people that I, I think would be qualified to be on there. So if we bypass that and just bring it back to us, then that doesn't hurt anybody's feelings and it makes it a lot easier. And it's maybe, maybe it'll go quicker, we'll see. So.
So let's set, why don't we set a municipal budget? And then let's do the corporate management experience with the number of employees.
So we just so happen to have a budget diagram down here with about ten or twelve cities on it. We've got, uh, I mean, Davenport's forty-five million, Mulberry twenty-one, Fort Me twenty-two, Arcadia forty-nine. The, let's see. So you're kind of just looking for a minimum there?
Yes.
You have a suggestion of the minimum?
That's a wide range. It's from five to sixty-eight. I mean, just a shot in the dark, like twenty-five. Maybe a twenty-five million dollar municipal budget and then still keep it at the fifty-plus employees or the corporate management.
Sure, I mean, we could also even do uh, you know, general fund dollars to make it a little bit more specific. So for instance, in our own city, we've got, you know, forty-seven million dollars total budget. But that's an astronomical number compared to the actual general fund, which is only eighteen-five.
Right.
So if we want to set, I mean, I think ten or twelve million of general fund dollars would probably be appropriate.
Denise is shaking her head, yes.
Any naysay on that? I mean.
No, I like that.
Okay, you think twelve?
Somewhere between twelve and fifteen, I think.
Twelve million, one once?
Sounds good.
All right, so it had to be a municipal, municipality with at least twelve million dollars of general fund dollars. Or uh, it would be a private company of.
I would say fifty plus employees.
Fifty people? Okay. Anybody opposed to that?
Go with that.
Okay.
We can always take into consideration if they do sub it out or use contractors. That they can always explain, you know, I have thirty-five full-time employees, but I also manage fifty as a subcontractor.
They could have a hundred subs that have ten thousand employees, who knows?
Right.
Okay. Anything else on the qualifications?
With those changes.
All right.
Disqualifications, do we need to put anything on there? If they did this or that, they are disqualified. So is it just felonies on the background checks? Is it misdemeanors as well? Or what, what's the disqualification point?
It's both and it depends on what the job position is. Um, so you would have to look at each one case by case if something came up.
So is that already set though for the city manager?
No.
No.
Yeah, I mean, I think if someone's found guilty of a sexual assault crime, it's probably not a great idea working in an office with lots of women if they're male.
Or some, something that would deem gross misconduct to, uh, anything along those.
Yeah, obviously allegations are, are one thing, but if someone's actually charged with something.
Right, that's different.
Yeah. Um, they're handling a huge amount of money, uh, so some, you know, financial crimes was a huge deal.
Yep.
Um, obviously information crimes, um, they're dealing with.
Well, if we're going to look at the, the background check, we'll go along with their resume, right?
We're going to pull the information. The question is what?
See that.
We are, but the question is what?
Because you can't disclose them to everyone. Wouldn't you just be able to tell us yes or no?
Correct.
Yeah, we can't actually look at the background check.
I see. So in other words, would you be okay with a city manager that has been charged with a, you know, sexual assault crime?
Well, of course not sexual assault crime, but.
Right, and that's what we're trying to decide is at what level is it cut off?
I see.
Yeah.
I would say like twenty years ago, a misdemeanor, if somebody has a misdemeanor, that doesn't mean that they're not capable of doing this position.
Sure, right. That, that's what we're asking you is where is your line? That's what we're asking.
Of course, of course it would be the sexual assault, but I mean, it's kind of, I don't know, I feel like it's a broad line. Not the sexual assault part. Not being able to see the, where we cut it off at. Of course the money crime, of course the sexual assault crime, but.
Perhaps uh, one of our sheriffs or deputies could uh, maybe help us in determining what types of crimes would result in prison time versus. I mean, obviously we don't want to hire anyone that, that is.
Probably say no felonies.
Right.
No felony.
No assault, battery.
Yeah. No violent crime of any kind.
Yes.
Violent crime, financial crime. Okay. If, if the audience is going to speak, you have to come to the microphone.
Just, just Maria Sutherland, out of curiosity, is, is staff going to look at all of the background and then advise the council? Or are you going to hire somebody to do it for you and you only do it once you pick your top five? Because if you do it for all twenty, it's going to cost you an arm and a leg.
Exactly.
But, so I mean, are you going to narrow it down and then do the background? Because if you advertise it, you're going to do a twenty-year background, that's going to eliminate a bunch of people from applying.
Okay. Stay right there one second. Do we have an idea of the cost of those backgrounds?
Uh, eighty-nine dollars.
Eighty-nine.
Well, a- actually that's only for the seven years, probably going to be more if we go twenty.
A hundred dollars, two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
It's could be upward of seven hundred.
Depending on how extensive.
If you, if you look at, you know, felonies and something, let's, let's, you know, you could have a traffic infraction and have your picture posted on, online with your orange jumpsuit and stuff. That doesn't necessarily mean that you're a criminal.
Sure.
But all of those things would be lined up in there. And then only you guys can see that along from HR. The public would not be privy to that information because supposedly you cannot hire someone based off of something they didn't go to prison for or that they were considered, um, if they were adjudicated or something, then you can't use that or hold it against them. So you'll have people that have that. I mean, you'll have people that, you know, had personal bankruptcies and things like that. You don't know the situation. Was it during COVID? You know, there's a lot of nuance that goes into that, which is why, you know, you guys, when you look at it, because if a committee looked at it, it would be more people looking at it. But that should never be a public record. I don't think it is anyway.
Right.
Only you guys would be privy to it and then you would decide from the, the categories when you narrow down the, the individuals. I mean, it's pretty simple.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I would just say if they didn't serve prison time.
But they paid their dues. But anyway, in a background would show all of that and you could decide. And one other thing also is that if you end up hiring somebody, you could make mistakes that other entities have done in which they didn't do a drug test on the individual that they hired. And that's important as well.
Don't name any names.
I'm not naming names. Um, but that is another one that if the person is offered the position, it would be pending the drug test. And you may find just the best person on, since sliced bread and.
Sure.
You know, they're on THC on a daily basis at work.
Um, I have one there. Um, what about the ones that um, have been arrested in court? But haven't been adjudicated yet. What about that?
Like they're pending trial or pending?
Yeah, they're, they're in court for something that they did, but you know, the court is not done yet. They haven't been adjudicated, found guilty or anything like that. They're in court or they've just been arrested.
I would guarantee that Jerry and Denise could come up with a very good criteria. And we can approve that at our next meeting. Anything else on the qualifications?
So going back to the background check for the financial part of it with the uh, Mrs. Sutherland brought up a good point about being the bankruptcy being COVID or, you know, going through a divorce and having to declare bankruptcy. Is that going to really put a halt to the applicant?
My opinion, yeah. I mean, if you're going to manage the entire city with finances, I think you need to be able to keep your stuff together regardless of the economic situation.
Kind of outside situation.
What about if they bankrupted and discharged, Mayor?
The bankruptcy's been discharged?
Yeah, that means, correct me, somebody who know more about it. If you go, if you go to bank court, uh, uh, bankruptcy court.
It's been longer than seven years ago.
Yeah, and then it's get discharged, meaning whatever they told you to do, you did it. I met those kind of people and it's been discharged. And now they done moved on with their life and they got their credit back, built back up. What about those kind of people? They got a bankruptcy on there, but it's been discharged years ago.
It just depends on how far back we want to go. I would say if it's been within the last seven years and it still shows up on your credit score, that'd be an absolute no for me. But if you want to uh, say it's fine after seven years, that's up to the council. Obviously, you know, if they started out life, they were nineteen years old and made some bad decisions and now they're, you know, fifty-five. I mean, maybe they've changed in the last twenty years, but you know, twenty years is not going to show that. I mean, I just think that if they've done something within the last twenty years, that they probably shouldn't be in this position. My opinion.
Yeah, I agree. Especially with felonies, they've been.
Yeah.
Charged of a felony, they don't need to be running a city.
I would say misdemeanors uh, count just because almost all traffic citations are misdemeanors. Um, you know, a lot, a lot of things can be misdemeanors. It really, you have to do a fairly decent crime to be considered a felony and actually be charged with it.
Right.
So.
So you'll, you'll go along with the felony and ignore the misdemeanor, is what you're saying? Like you wouldn't put very much uh, gain into the misdemeanor?
I wouldn't. I mean, the only exception would be if it was some type of a uh, violent thing and it was reoccurring.
Or if it was recent is my only thing.
Yeah.
If it's a misdemeanor within so many years, like three years, five years, I would say.
They got thrown out of a bar a couple times in the last year. It's probably not somebody we want to consider, you know. We are asking a lot of this position. You know, this person is not your average person. This person is a, a one in a million type of person. And that's who you want leading your city. So I think that the bar should be high and if we don't find the right person, then we can make it wider. But I think that we should definitely shoot for a very qualified person.
I agree with that.
Oh, are we seeking someone locally in the beginning and then we're going to widen the geographical area?
If I had to say, I would put it all out at the same time. There is no preference. You just, everybody's all in the same boat.
I think that's a good idea.
No favoritism. Best candidate wins.
I agree.
Anything else on the qualifications? Anything else on the city manager position as a whole?
Oh.
Okay. Go ahead. You know the rules.
What is the expected timeframe before you hire? Do you think, you know, between meetings and whatnot? Um, are you going to have special meetings for that or regular meetings? And the reason why I ask is your charter specifies that you can only have an interim for a specific amount of time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in one prior um, administration of the city, the applicants, the meetings, the interviews took more time than the time allocated for you to have an interim.
Mm-hmm.
And the decision at the time was just to make the interim, the city manager, to give you the time to go ahead and do what you want to do. But that's a temporary city manager position so that you don't have to have the pressure of fulfilling your charter obligation.
Sure.
So when that time comes, you may want to consider that or do it now because otherwise it's, they have to sign things, they have to be responsible for things. They have to be able to um, do the duties of a city manager. And oftentimes the interim, if not having that authority, cannot perform those functions.
Sure. That's a good point. I think that that could probably fairly easily be overcome by uh, an employment contract with the interim. Making them the actual city manager for a allotted amount of time if we run up against that fence. But we will cross that bridge when we get there. Anything else? Seeing none?
Do we need, did we need to set a salary for the interim?
Yes.
Okay, salary for the interim. What is your suggestion, Denise?
Uh, when, when we met uh, in the staff meeting, we were talking about that. Um, and depending on experience level, um, it could be arranged from uh, seventy-eight, which is the director pay up to a hundred, depending on experience. Um, right now, the, the interim is in an out-of-class pay scenario, which is only an extra dollar an hour. Um, which would be retro.
God bless you.
Yeah, for sure. Which would, the, whatever council decides on is the fair uh, pay scale for that. It would be retro back to when that responsibility was taken on.
Sure.
Is this in addition to what she gets as a city clerk or is somebody else stepping into that role?
Stepping into that role.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think Christie is more than qualified to be there, her interim. I mean, she's already uh, almost qualified uh, at her education level already. I think she knows more about the city than a lot of people in her position. Uh, not only that, but she has uh, a lot of really, first of all, she's got a lot of great help from staff, but she also has a lot of great help from Liz, who, in my position, I always thought she was sort of like the city manager's clerk. And, and then, and there was one time not, not too long ago where all calls actually went to Liz. And then Liz decided whether she needed to, to pass them out or, or give them to each department head or whatever. So I, I think with, with Liz being there to help Christie, I think that she's more than qualified to continue to run as interim city manager. Um, wage scale, I, I, I remember the one time we gave the position to three people and they actually split the city manager's le- uh, pay, but uh, that may be a little excessive. But I think if you look at some of these jobs, things on the bottom of our computers that I have here, it loo- it looks like a lot of these city clerks are making like seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, or sixty to seventy-five thousand. So I don't know what she's making right now, but I, I think she deserves more than a dollar an hour. And I think that she's more than qualified and uh, she's getting more experience every day. Uh, so I, I think she can handle it and she's got a lot of help and a lot of support. And uh, and I, I, I think it's just a, if we try to go out and try to hire somebody to be the interim, that's just going to be more delay than trying to find somebody permanent. And, and then the process is going through the same thing again. So I think that the simplest way is to let Christie stand there, decide what we all think is, is at least a fair wage for her to have double duties. And uh, and then make it, basically focus on hiring the next city manager.
Denise, what is the uh, current city clerk level position pay?
Off the top of my head, I don't have it, sorry.
Okay.
I make sixty thousand.
I didn't want to ask you directly, but.
Thank you, Chrissy.
Yeah, so the director level started at what, seventy-two?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight. I mean, I think it would probably be appropriate just to go to the director level um, for now. And then the council can always reassess it any meeting that we have going forward. Sounds like we'll be having a lot of them very soon.
I, I agree with that, but we can't vote on it today, right?
No, we're just looking for affirmation here.
Yeah, I, I like that idea. I think that would be fair to her and fair to us, so.
Which would be the start of what, you said seventy-eight?
Yep.
I, I have a question in regards to uh, this is for Christie.
Yes, ma'am.
Um. Did Liz take on extra duties than what her position required?
I have started to, to give her extra duties, so she's helping me with phone calls. She's also taken on the minutes that are not city council. That includes planning and zoning, CRA advisory. Um, I will still be doing CRA board and city council just because those tend to have a lot more detail. Um, I want to make sure I keep with that standard.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, she also, anytime I need her to do something, I just have to ask her and, and she takes care of it. So she's been absolutely essential to my success.
So does, this is for Denise. Does the charter say anything because Liz is taking on more? Does the charter say anything that Liz get anything extra or is that's up for the council?
Um, no, it's, it's up to the city manager, um, based on her taking on those roles. Um, the city manager has already uh, bumped her two steps in pay for assuming those roles. Not an out-of-class, just a two-step.
You mean Chrissy has?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. The only purview that the council has with employees is the city attorney and the city manager.
Well, maybe we can move Liz up to a different title like um, instead of deputy mayor, how about deputy clerk? This is a suggestion.
That would be up to the interim city manager.
Okay, I trust her.
I think that's a conversation I got to have with Liz. Make sure, I, I try to communicate with her, make sure she knows everything before any type of major decision.
Sure.
But that's, that's definitely not off the table for sure.
Yeah, I, I will say, and Liz is favorable, I've been out there uh, quite a few times. And for me, the most impressive thing, uh, I don't see all the stuff that she's helping Christie right now, but how she's handled uh, the citizens that have gone up there, especially those that are Spanish speaking. And I've had many of them tell. And I've had many of them tell us, and even people come to this meeting and told us. That, that Liz has treated them with such great kindness and. And with certain things for applying for application, for facade grant and so on and so forth. But she's been a big help, so she's actually learned a lot on the job, but I believe the ex-city manager gave her. Additional qualifications and difficult duties to do, so I think that would take. An effect to whatever. You decide to do.
She, she has been absolutely essential.
Yeah. That's great. That's good. I, I like teamwork.
My last question is for Christie. What, what do you think about that pay bump?
I can work with it. Most definitely.
I just curious.
I appreciate you guys. It's okay. I, I figured that there was going to be salary increases. I know we're about to hit budget. So, and, and that's definitely quite a bit more than what I'm used to making, so I have no complaints.
Well, you're doing quite a bit more than you were hired to do.
Yep.
Yes.
All right, anything else for the good of the city?
No, sir. Reminds me of old times when you used to sit up here. One more thing.
No, I was just going to say, and. In support of your decision with Christie. The time that she is interim city manager also comes with benefits relevant to the pay and vacation, and. She now has a new hourly rate, so as long as she's interim, she should be able to retain that hourly rate when it comes to her vacation time. And her sick time, because if she indeed is not hired as your city manager, she'll revert back to her old city clerk job. And all of that pay will revert back to her then current rate. So if you do a contract or not, if you don't do a contract. Then that should be something that you would have to agree upon retroactively so that she is compensated accordingly for her benefits.
That makes sense, makes sense.
All right, anything else for the good of the city?
No, sir.
Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.
Thank you.